Hold on one moment.
Sure.
Just waiting for his text response, so give me one moment. Okay, we are live. Go ahead, Mayor.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is August 10th, 2021, and I am calling to order the meeting of the Pino Finance Subcommittee. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Did you call the roll?
I did not call the roll. It would be important for the public and for us to know that we are all here, wouldn't it be? Thank you so much for that reminder. I'm getting a little better at seeing everyone's image on my screen, and I'm seeing everyone, but it doesn't mean that the public is. So thank you for that reminder. Roll call then, and I will ask for assistance with that. Who can assist? Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Treasurer Swerengen?
Here.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Here.
Mayor Martinez Rubin?
Here.
City Manager Murray?
Here.
Assistant City Manager Hector De La Rosa?
Here.
I can also note for the record that Director Gilery is on the line, Mr. David Hannum is on the line, and we have Brock Sandstone also on the line. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone. And on the screen, you see a slide that reads Public Comment, which is the next item on our agenda with instructions about taking advantage of an opportunity to provide public comment. The Zoom webinar ID number is there, 845-3073-1450, or you can join us by phone with area code 669-900-6833. And in order for us and for staff to know that you are interested in providing public comment, we ask that you use the raise hand feature, which on my screen is found at the bottom of the screen, and click on there to indicate that you would like to speak. Otherwise, if you are on the phone, press star nine or asterisk nine to alert staff that you'd like to comment, and press star six or asterisk six to unmute once you've called in. So with that as directions, Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone on the line, either by phone or who is indicated that they wish to provide public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, I just wanted to address that we hadn't received any written correspondence for this meeting, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Stone to confirm public speakers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. There are no public comments.
No public comments received. Thank you both. All right, then, let's move on to consent items. And on that, we have one matter, and that's the approval of the minutes of the May 12th and June 3rd meetings of this Subcommittee. And may I have a motion to approve consent items?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I seconded.
Okay, seconded by Mayor Protem Salimi. Any objections?
I need to only approve the portion of the agenda where I was present, I believe. I think that's correct. So I will approve that portion of the agenda.
You can approve the minutes if you read them. It's up to you.
I didn't like them. No, I'm kidding. Yeah, it's fine. If it's okay for me to approve the entire thing, then we'll go.
Okay. All right. And even though there are three, because this is a remote meeting, I think we need to go the route of asking for a roll call vote. So Madam City Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Treasurer Swerengen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez Rubin?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries. Thanks.
Okay. So the business items before us is to hear about the American Rescue Plan Act and additional fiscal year 2122 appropriation process. We're going to discuss this, and as a committee, we will make recommendations that will then be heard by the City Council at its next City Council meeting. Director Gilery, you have a presentation for us?
Yes, I do. Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Committee staff and members of the community.
And Director Gilery, I am not hearing you at my end. I'm not sure if I'm the only one who can't. Anyone else? Can you give us an indication whether you can hear Director Gilery?
I'm not hearing her either.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can.
Okay. Sorry, I was just speaking a little lower than I thought. Okay, so good afternoon, Finance Subcommittee staff and members of the community. I will be giving a short presentation before we get into the discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act and the additional appropriations for the fiscal year 2122. And I will go ahead and share my summary. So the purpose of this item is to have a discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act and also additional appropriations for fiscal year 2122, and to direct staff to provide recommendations to the City Council at its next meeting for their input and further direction on an appropriations process. So just to give some background, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law in March of this year. And of that economic stimulus package, which totaled 1.9, sorry, I should say 1.9 billion, got a million there, 350 billion was allocated to states, cities, tribes, and territories. Pino falls under the nonentitlement units of local government, and this is because we have a population of 50, or less than 50,000 people. And so of the 19.5 billion set aside for the nonentitlement units, Pino's share is 4.6 million, of which we received half of our allocation in the amount of 2.3 million that was received in July of 2021, and we expect to receive the second allocation of 2.3 million at the same time next calendar year. Some of the allowable uses of funds for the ARPA funds includes public health. So an example would be locations set up to provide COVID vaccinations, negative economic impacts to businesses, to households, and individuals. So similarly, we did launch the Business Assistance Program. So a program similar to that would fall under this category. It also covers general economic or general economic development efforts would also fall in that category. There's also premium pay, infrastructure for broadband, water, and sewer, infrastructure improvements. And then the last category is revenue replacement. So there is a tool that was launched by the California Society of Municipal Officers that was launched to cities to use it to determine how much revenue loss they experienced due to COVID-19. And so a portion of this funding can go toward that to backfill the budget for the revenue losses. And one example for the city of Pino would be the revenue loss in the Recreation Department, for example. There are a couple of ineligible uses, and that includes offsetting or delaying any new or expanded tax increases. So it cannot be used to backfill that, and we cannot use it to deposit into any pension funds. In addition to that, just some other factors to consider. We're looking at the allowable uses. That this funding is one-time in nature. Although it will be spent over several fiscal years, it is still one-time funding, and once it's fully exhausted, it will not be replaced. So we should be mindful of the projects that we fund. And if there are any ongoing projects or any expanded or creation of new projects, we need to ensure that those are sustainable and can be funded with the city's budget. So we would look at things that are ongoing versus one-time. We also want to seek opportunities to make investments in capital, critical infrastructure, and things that will provide long-term benefits to the city. As a part of this appropriations process, we would also like to address the additional appropriations for the fiscal year 2122. And this is just to provide a reminder of those items that were added to the 2122 budget during the budget adoption process back in June. And as we can see, there were several items that totaled 4.4 million that will be funded by fund balances in the General Fund and also the Measure S funds. Some of these are ongoing, and some of those are one-time. And again, for those items, we want to be sure that if it is ongoing, that it's sustainable. Another point that's important to note is that the estimated ending fund balance has not been audited, so this is not our final numbers. So we want to keep that in mind as we add any additional items to the budget. Staff is confident that the estimates, that will be pretty close to the estimates, but again, they are not final for the fiscal year 2021. We are going into our audit process, and we will have those final year-end numbers in September. So for the appropriations process, what staff is recommending is that we establish some guiding principles to guide the process, and a number of agencies are doing the same thing in terms of developing a process before they actually develop the expenditure plan for the ARPA funds in particular. So the guiding principles will be used to guide how we appropriate the funds. An example of a guiding principle would be pursue actions that contribute to the city's climate action goals or look for ways to advance strategic plan strategies. And those are things that we could establish in those principles that will help us as we appropriate the funds. We also want to provide opportunities.
Can you see both screens? Can we try to swap presenter mark?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just one moment. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, David. And so we want to, through the appropriations process, to provide opportunities for community input. And that will be done through budget workshops that we're planning to hold. And those workshops will include some interactive tools, such as an external facilitator to help us facilitate that process, and then also some community engagement or interactive software. There's one called Balancing Act that other agencies are using, and Councilmember Murphy actually introduced City Manager Murray and myself to Balancing Act. And so we have been in communication and exploring using that software to gain community input on this process. We would also like to use the analytics gathered from the community input and then incorporate staff input in the form of timelines and feasibility and also bandwidth to get projects done. And then also explore opportunities to advance the strategic plan strategies to the extent possible. And this process covers both the ARPA funds and also the additional fiscal year 2122 appropriations. So as I mentioned, the budget workshops, the main goal would be to facilitate collaboration amongst the stakeholders, which includes staff, the City Council, and the community. And this will be an ongoing effort, not just for the purposes of the ARPA funds or the additional appropriations, but also moving forward into the next budget cycle and also the development of the capital improvement process. We would like to discuss potential appropriations of the ARPA funds during these workshops, and that could be in the form of brainstorming and also using those interactive tools that I mentioned. And then for the second, so we're planning to, so the second workshop would include council decisions on the appropriations of the funds. So the next steps after this meeting would be presenting recommendations to the City Council for their input and direction on the process, and then holding the budget workshops.
Thank you, Director Gilery, for that. If I can, I'm just going to add a little bit refresher on the background to how we've gotten to this point, which was we, the Finance Subcommittee, had a number of meetings where it's created a proposed budget that was presented to the City Council, and that was largely adopted the way it was proposed. And then in addition, the City Council, during its consideration of the proposed budget, considered a bunch of additional appropriations that were recommended by some council members. Because we needed to adopt the budget by June 30th, not all, the council didn't have enough time to discuss, I don't think, all of the different additional appropriations that all the council members wanted to discuss. And so the City Council agreed that it wanted to have additional discussion in this fiscal year about, you know, additional appropriations to make right now to the fiscal year 2122 budget. As you all know, the City Council can make modifications to the budget at any time during the course of the year, but there might be some ideas that council members would like to see funded right now because they want to make sure that they're included budget for and on the work plan. So in a recent council meeting, when this item, this topic of additional appropriations was scheduled, the council directed staff to, and agreed that there would be a two-public workshop framework for discussing those additional appropriations. And then similarly, when we first learned of the revenue that we'd be getting from the American Rescue Plan Act, staff thought that, you know, we didn't have enough bandwidth in the normal budget process to make budget decisions about the appropriation of the American Rescue Plan Act. And so we proposed to talk about appropriations of that funding, particularly during this time of the new fiscal year. So the things that have been agreed to and directed by council that have brought us to this point are that we want to have a two-public workshop process to brainstorm and make decisions about any additional appropriations, you know, general fund appropriations for this fiscal year, as well as decide what to do with the ARPA funds. And so that discussion of that was referred to the Finance Subcommittee, and what we want to do today is talk about different options and have this Finance Subcommittee make a recommendation that we will discuss at the next council meeting for the processes of making decisions about additional appropriations from the General Fund and about ARPA. So that's where we're at today. And in the staff report that Director Gilery prepared, she mentioned a couple different options for elements to those processes, the potential timeline, use of interactive tools to engage the public, potential use of consultants. And so really, we just want to have facilitated discussion and take the Subcommittee's direction for what to recommend to the council. The council will discuss that and provide final direction to staff at the next council meeting. Then we'll be off and running, preparing for those workshops on these two different types of appropriations. Just want to make sure we are all caught up to what led us to this point. So anybody have any questions about what led us to the point or what we want to discuss and decide upon today? Okay, great. Well, I'll just add a little bit more, which is that subsequent to issuing the staff report for this, Director Gilery continued to do some research about how other communities are handling these appropriations processes. And as we've discussed before, a number of communities are engaging consultants to support cities in these appropriation decisions. The consultants are playing a couple different roles. Some are engaging consultants to facilitate the workshops. Others are engaging consultants just to provide advice, not necessarily actively facilitate workshops, but to be on hand as subject matter experts regarding what are allowable uses, say, of ARPA funds, what most cities are investing their ARPA funds in, where the greatest needs are. And of course, a lot of cities are using various formats for public engagement. So the council has already directed that we would have a series of two workshops, and the general idea was the first one would be for brainstorming ARPA expenditures and additional general fund appropriations. The second would be for making decisions. With some time between those workshops for staff to vet the ideas and provide some analysis of them. So if an idea is brainstormed at the first workshop to do a certain kind of study, staff would need to determine what the cost of that study would be, what the timeframe would be, and things like that. Then that information could come back to the council at the second workshop, where the council would then make a decision upon it. So that's the, that's the general idea. We're happy to answer any questions you have now, or let you all discuss what you think an appropriate format would be. When talking about options, one thing that occurred to both Director Gilery and me and our public work staff is that two of the main areas of eligible expenses in infrastructure. So we originally thought that this ARPA funding was going to be quite flexible. As we've seen the guidance come out and the restrictions, it's actually much more narrow than we expected. There are a number of buckets which Director Gilery discussed that are eligible. Public health and premium pay related to COVID response. The city really doesn't have very significant expenses in that area, so I don't think we would appropriate much for that. Lost revenue, as Director Gilery mentioned, there are some online calculators. We could claim a really significant portion of our $4.6 million as reimbursement for lost revenue. If we did that, that would just sit in general fund balance until it's appropriated. So that would be a very flexible way to claim that money. There's, it's eligible to use this for economic support for households, businesses, and economic development. And then the infrastructure allowable expenses are actually quite narrow. And I think part of the thinking was that we are, the federal government is working on an infrastructure bill that would provide infrastructure for transportation-related projects. And so this ARPA funding is, cannot be used for transportation-related. It's really limited to broadband and clean water and sewer. So that's not a very broad set of infrastructure projects. The current city budget already includes funding for studies of municipal broadband and sewer master plan. And so in discussing this with community development, public work staff, it feels premature to staff to appropriate funding for either broadband or a sewer project until we've completed those two assessments. And we're doing, as I mentioned, a sewer system master plan and also a water reuse feasibility plan, basically, for our effluent. And are also going to be doing a study of broadband. So we don't know what those studies are going to conclude regarding where the best return on investment, where the opportunities are. So it does feel premature to make a funding decision that we're going to proceed with any of those types of projects at this time until we know a little bit more. So that's a long introduction. Happy to answer questions and hear what you guys direct.
Thank you, City Manager Murray and Director Gilery. City Manager, you mentioned that one possibility, one option was to calculate the revenue losses that the city has had and that there would be, and I may be using the inadequate adjective here, but the chances are there'd be a likely use of most of the, of the ARPA funds at this point. Can you give us a rough idea, if at all, without knowing, without having used a calculator? My thinking is that with $2.3 million, that the $300,000 is easily not available because we can easily request reimbursement for even that amount of loss. Is it more than that?
Yes, it is more than that. And actually, it looks at the full range of funds. So it considers funds outside of the General Fund. So for instance, recreation, gas tax. It also looks at the wastewater revenue over the last few years because it uses the previous three years before COVID as the benchmark. And so yes, it actually exceeds the $2.3 million mentality. There is one transaction, though, that is included in there, which I am waiting for a response to ensure that that's not an anomaly that needs to be pulled out. But according to the guidance that is there now, there was a huge sale of property in one of the fiscal years, I think it was 1718, that's driving some of the numbers up. So that could change a little bit if that transaction is pulled out. But as far as I know, that is supposed to be included at this point.
Okay, so tell me if I'm understanding this correctly. With this 2.3 that's been appropriated to us now, we can easily use all of that to essentially pay us, pay us back, pay the city back, reimburse. And then we wouldn't have the discussion about using ARPA funds for all the different possibilities that were outlined earlier, for all the allowable expenses. And we also wouldn't necessarily have the conversations about some of the public's identified needs. Often, what we hear about is assistance to small businesses and increasingly to residents because of the leases and rents that are coming due, and probably some relief related to that as examples. Yeah? Okay. All right. And the other, the other option then is for us to use these 2.3 or part of that, part of it might be to reimburse those or make up for those losses, reimburse them, and then have some portion remaining for however we determine is best used. Okay.
And if I may, I'm just going to add one clarification, which is if we do use it to repay ourselves for lost revenue, that money that we claim for that purpose still does need to be expended. We can't keep that in the bank forever. We need to expend it within the regulatory timeframe, which is, I think, by the end of 2024. Is that correct, Director Gilery?
So it has to be obligated by 2024, and it has to be spent by 2026.
So we'd essentially be banking it, and that would, in a way, provides, it changes the color of that money a little bit so that it's more flexible. After we repay ourselves, my understanding is that it can be used for any expense that would have been allowed by the funds that it's backfilling. So if it's backfilling the loss of general fund revenue, then it can be used for any purpose that general fund revenue could have been used for, and that's actually quite broad. So yeah, there are a lot of options, and particularly regarding these infrastructure projects where coincidentally, or maybe the ARPA funding helped to get these on the city's radar, but particularly regarding broadband and water reuse and sewer projects, as I mentioned, we're already going through these assessments, after which we'll have a much better understanding of where the most valuable investments in those assets would be. So it does feel like it makes sense to not to yet commit to specific expenditures in those areas and to wait and see what the assessments say. The part of the, the ARPA funding that feels most pressing and which we don't really have a specific assessment underway on is the kind of mitigating the economic impacts. So we are going to be developing an economic development strategic plan, but a lot of that is more high-level and long-term than would address the immediate economic impacts that businesses and residents felt from COVID. So I wouldn't expect, for instance, an economic development plan to say we should give small grants to businesses or to households who lost income during COVID. So I think one allowable expense that feels more time-sensitive and pressing, and, you know, we're not developing a long-term plan related to, is about immediate assistance to businesses and households to help them overcome. So I guess our having discussed this at a staff level and considered our different options makes us feel like, so we don't, you know, we don't have significant public health or immediate government expenses related to COVID response. On the infrastructure stuff, we're doing further analysis, determining where the best investment of those are. And, you know, we could claim our lost revenue to put some of that money in the bank, but we might identify the infrastructure project soon enough to not have to bank that money. But this issue of mitigating economic impacts does feel like a decision the City Council could make right now to appropriate some amount of money and provide some direction on the form of that program. Because, as I say, there are on the form of that program. Because as I say, there's, you know, that's a really, there's a really time we need. We would still have to do some assessments. That's something that consultants could help us with. We don't know what the magnitude and type of need is. We did have a small business assistance program. That was, you know, developed quite intuitively without an extensive needs assessment or gap analysis process. There have been many forms of public assistance for households and businesses related to COVID. So I think if we were going to invest a significant amount of ARPA funds, we'd want to do more gap analysis and needs assessment. And I think there's some consultants who are working with many cities on ARPA appropriations that could provide us with some background on that to say, you know, that some of the vacuums in the federal assistance to small businesses are here and this is what cities are investing and the like. So that does feel like something the city might want to decide to fund right away and move forward with.
Thank you. There's one other category that you haven't mentioned, and I'd like to have the committee know where, where the city stands with regard to this or what position we're in. The premium pay. Premium pay to staff who had been in direct, in, in positions where they were directly involved with the public in addressing COVID-related preventive activities or otherwise, but again, very specifically related to COVID-19. Is, what can we say about that here in, in Penel with regard to premium pay for any of our staff?
So I'm not sure that we have any expenditures that fall under that category. This funding is for expenditures effective March, I believe it's March 23rd, 2021, because the CARES Act was the stimulus package before this that covered a number of those items, including public safety over time and such. And so City Manager Murray and I did discuss this briefly. And at this point, I have not identified any expenditures that would be allowable under this category.
Okay. I just want to have another, an idea, the committee as well as council, that we can discount that. I'm not using discount as a, as an accounting financial term, but if, that we can not have to consider that category of, of expense. Okay. Thank you.
All that, if I may, that, you know, we might be able to identify some expenditures in that area. For, for instance, potentially some fire department staff backfilling if we had staff out on quarantine protocols or other things, but it would be relatively minor in comparison to the magnitude of the other buckets that we're talking about. So if it was, you know, council philosophically, so some cities, including Concha Costa County, are taking the position that the first expenditure or use of the ARPA funds that they would like to see for their cities is paying their cities back for things that they have lost or expended related to COVID. So that's their top priority. Cities are all over the place in terms of what their top priorities are, but that's the top priority of some cities. So they're going through a really extensive process of identifying all those expenses and appropriating ARPA funds to pay themselves back for that and also then recovering any lost revenue. So they're doing those things first and then they're just, you know, doing economic impacts and infrastructure with whatever remains. So I think if the city council philosophically wanted to ensure that we received, you know, reimbursed ourselves for all those expenses, we might be able to identify some. But I don't think, as Director Guillory mentioned and we've discussed, I don't think they're very significant.
Okay, thank you. So it's a matter of identifying need now or later. And the, the option of having some flexibility with these funds is quite attractive, but I'd like the committee to, certainly to, you know, discuss it, discuss that with me and also get into the conversation about what we believe are the principles that we want to ensure are recommended by the committee to the council and the council can think about them as well and discuss them at the next meeting. So I've asked some of the questions. Committee members, either Mayor Protem Salimi or Treasurer Sworjen, questions for Directors Guillory or City Manager?
No questions specifically, but it sounds like it's, it's a very narrow corridor that we're working with in, in the area of infrastructure work. I keep going back to, I guess, when I recommended doing a process of getting generators for the senior center in, in City Hall, which is infrastructure, but it's definitely not within the scope of the, I hate to call it a windfall, but the, the appropriation that we've received. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to take a look at that and see if there's some way to tie that in with future situations where we could fall under this category again, where we may need those spaces and may need those personnel in an emergency situation. And COVID certainly was an emergency situation for a year. So I, I just don't know how to tie that in. I'm open to suggestions on that. And the other one, of course, is economic impact. And I think we've got a pretty wide range there where we could definitely justify payment on economic impacts. And there's certainly a lot of that out there. So those are my only suggestions.
We'll, we'll come back to something that you said. I'd like to come back to something that you said, and that's making a tire, making a connection. Or I think the term in, 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 at least that I've heard among some of you in, in past years is a nexus, a connection, something that binds or where, where, where needs intersect, where there's that, that common ground, if you will, that coincides with either a, a category of a project or what I often think of is that might tie among different groups in, in our community. So more, more conversation about that in a moment. But Mayor Protem Salimi, any questions for Director Guillory or City Manager Murray?
I don't have any questions. I just think that it's a conversation that the entire council needs to have. Thank you for the presentation. That's my question and comments.
Okay, then I'm going to encourage both of you to, to think out loud with me so that as a committee, we come away with at least three additional thoughts that have to do with the principles that we want to have the council keep in mind. And granted, they may discard them. They may say, no, that doesn't make sense to us. But at least amongst the three of us, we will have, we've been given a preview and thank you, staff, Director Guillory and City Manager Murray and everyone else involved in the report that was presented today. Because you have distilled months and months of conversations and webinars and presentations by many other groups to try to make sense of, of what these ARPA funds are about. You use the term windfall, Treasurer Sworjen, and as I see it, it is, and as we know, it is a one-time source of funding. And it, it's quite historic in, in, in my view, because here we are, which is, again, is, is a call for you to think along with me. And consider that, you know, this, this is a historic moment where we are given the opportunity and we have the privilege to have some say-so as to how we can make a difference and for residents. These funds were appropriated to us based on the population of the city. They're appropriated to us not easily because it took months and months of discussion at the federal level to keep, even approve these funds. And, and if we think about where they came from, they, they came, there's a history about, you know, public funding and, and that's, you know, different, different taxes. So our residents have different ideas about how taxes should be spent because they are, what is it? What's the name given? American Rescue Fund. Even that in itself may connote something positive or not so positive among, among the, the city residents. But nonetheless, there, there are funds here that if we make some recommendations about how they will be used, it also requires us or has us thinking about where is that greater need? Where is that immediate need? Or where is that midterm? How is that we can use some of these funds for some midterm use, some results that we'd be seeing in a couple of years from now when we don't have them anymore? And then another possibility is to use some of these funds to build upon something that's already in place that we know is meant for a life of another 25 or 50 years. Having said that, we also know that much of our, many of our facilities, our facilities have, have a history in and of themselves and merit some attention. City Hall is one of them. Can't remember what year it was, it was built, but it, it could use a, it could use a refresher. And I don't know that that's the kind of expense that we want to, to make or appropriation we want to make, but just as an example that our facilities also, in, in some cases are older than others. And when it comes to infrastructure, I think people usually think about what's hidden, our sewer systems, our power lines or future use of, of, of alternative uses of energy and installing those. And the good news is that once we have, one piece of good news, as I see it, is that once we have those assessments in process now, by the time that the infrastructure bill that was approved by the Senate, by the Senate today makes its way down to local government, it'll probably be another year about. And so the timing may be such that we will then have further news about how we can best invest those funds once we receive them and if and how we receive them. So that's also something. So back to thinking about principles. I'm going to propose something and I'd like the committee members to offer their thoughts about this. Thinking back on how these funds were appropriated based on population, what I'd like to think, perhaps think about is that one principle to keep in, keep in mind or one fundamental notion that would guide the use of these funds is that how they are going to be used is going to benefit everyone across, across the, across the city in one way or another. If we can, we can, we can clearly point to how that may be, then, then I think it's a fairer way of making those funds available. Now, that's a little different than thinking about eligibility versus actual receipt of some of these funds. So eligibility could be everyone, but we don't have, and we, we have only so much of this anyway. We have, have about $2 million really, $2 million to, to figure out how we can use in the next fiscal year, if at all. Of that, I'm thinking just roughly dividing that into thirds so that one portion of it is used for immediate relief. That third is somehow divided proportionately among the number of small businesses that we have here that are part of our licensing database, for example. And the other portion is for relief among residents that are facing the possibility of eviction. Because we know that those eviction moratoriums are going to come to an end. We also know that there are limitations to, to where people can get a, a, a big source of, of money. We're, we're talking about thousands of dollars here for any one resident. So there's an aspect of, it's almost, what I'm going to say next is, is almost contradicts itself. But those funds could be made available to any resident of, or any business owner in Penel with some caveat, some eligibility criteria that has to be built in. And that eligibility criteria then narrows it down to only those who may not have all the means of accessing that kind of capital. So one third would go to that. Another third of the $2 million, another third would go to projects that already in, that we already have that fall under the categories of infrastructure, however, however small that might be right now, even though we only have master plans in process or, or to be in process. But build upon that. And then that leaves us another third that at this point, I'm not sure how, how we could spend it. But I'm thinking about, about even breaking up the $2 million that way. So that's just a thought right now. And I'm curious to know what you're thinking as.
Don't we have, according to our finance director, you have about three years to actually put projects together. Is that correct? Is that what I heard?
Yes, we have the eye on it by December 31st, 2024 and spanned by December 31st, 2026.
So it's not like it's a rush to, to get specific, specific on it. In generalities, you know, I, I like your proposal. And I think that may give you some, may give the council and the community some idea of guidelines as to where this money was, is going to be available to the community. But it doesn't have to be spent all at once. And I think you remarked about that, too. Some of it could be spent this year, some next year. And depending on what the council wants to do with it. And I, I agree with Vice Mayor Salimi that we should definitely let the council, maybe we can make some suggestions and then let the council take it from there.
Well, that's what this, this committee is, is going, is coming up with, the recommendations that yes, the council will hear and yes, the council will add or take away. We've seen that happen as well. So yes.
If I may, yeah, I just want to remind everybody about the, we decided that we are going to break this into a multi-step process. So really what we want, and I know that people probably for a while have been formulating ideas about, you know, the most productive uses of these funds. The question that's before the subcommittee right now is, is really what process is a recommendation for the process for how the appropriation is going to be decided. We're not yet at the point of making a specific recommendation to the council for the appropriations. Because really, I think as a result of the budget process, we realized we wanted to bring budget decisions that are this significant before the full council. So I want to circle back on a couple of comments, one that the treasurer made and one that Vice Mayor Salimi made. Treasurer Sworjen, the budget does include funding for emergency power backup. So that is a project that is going to be, that's, that is funded in the capital plan. I think it's for $200,000. So that might not meet all of our needs, but that's on the radar. So I think that that's fortunately addressed because that's not an eligible expenditure for these ARPA funds. And then to Vice Mayor Salimi's comment that, you know, he thinks it's appropriate, which the treasurer and I know the mayor also echoed, for the entire council to be part of the appropriation decision and discussion. Again, what the subcommittee is, is going to provide a recommendation on today is what the process should be for making a decision on these appropriations. And again, what council had previously tentatively decided was there would be a series of two public workshops, I think held outside of normal council meeting times, possibly on weekends, to make it easier for a broader cross-section the community to participate. And also to get the city council out of its normal environments to perhaps make it a more free-flowing conversation just by changing the, the, the format a little bit. So what we would like from the subcommittee is a recommendation for how to, you know, to, to make these appropriation decisions. And I think an option is, again, to have a series of two workshops. The first one really brainstorming and that could have a portion dedicated to these, you know, additional general funded measure appropriations and a portion dedicated to ARPA. And that's what happens at that workshop. And it could be, you know, facilitated by our normal chair, the mayor. It could be facilitated by staff. We could bring in an outside facilitator. And that could just be to let everybody surface all the ideas, get public input about different uses for these funds. And then maybe at the conclusion of that workshop, the city council decides which of those brainstorm ideas have enough legs that they want staff to go out and pencil out. And maybe at that meeting, the council would already make a decision that it didn't want to invest any funds right now or make specific appropriations, say for sewer-related projects or municipal broadband, because we know we're still doing assessments on that. And then there'd be a follow-up meeting at which actual decisions were made on additional appropriations and the ARPA funds. And those decisions could be asking for reimbursement of our, our, our lost revenue, which is essentially be banking that money. And we all, the city council doesn't need to make any decisions about the use of those funds right now at all. As Director Guillory mentioned, it's been restated. They don't need to be spent until the end of 2026, which is quite a ways away. If we're going to invest in a capital project, we can't wait, you know, there needs to be some time for the delivery of that project. But I would say we still have comfortably, you know, at least a year to make decisions about how to fund those. If they, if we think there are more pressing needs like economic assistance, we might want to do those now. So I just wanted to remind everybody that what we're, what we really want to do today is identify a process through which the, the full council can participate in the decision and the community can get involved. And we can start brainstorming and discussing options at any time, but that's what we And we can start brainstorming and discussing options at any time, but that's what we really want to get to the council.
Okay, well, you've got a process outlined. I would um I would recommend that you use an outside facilitator. Um it frees staff up to do the research necessary. Once that brainstorming is narrowed down to the X number of, you know, top five ideas or what have you. That um the council would then want to hear again sec- at the second meeting. Um and decide. And also, um I think one of the challenges that we have. Uh as as council members is is that decision-making. So I would I would. I would want us to seek someone who not only has facilitation skills, but also uh when it comes to deciding. Um that that we're introduced to a decision-making process. That uh or the, yeah, this a decision-making approach that um that we can live with for the for that second part of the uh. That's the part two of the workshop. So that would be, that would be my thoughts on on that. I thought we had agreed that we would. I I thought the council had agreed that it would be a two-parter. I guess we're reconfirming that here in this committee. Um and then anything else that might have occurred to us since we first heard that. Um committee members, uh Mayor Protem Salimi or? Treasurer Swearingen, what do you think about?
City manager, thank you for the process. I do agree with the process. Put in place by the city manager and proposed about the two public workshop on the weekend. And also like the idea about bringing a a outside consultant. To help us facilitate the process. One suggestion that we'd like to have is. I also would like to reserve a portion of the money for immediate release. Just in case if we need to do something and I don't want to have to wait an extra six to eight weeks if we need the money. And I will let the city staff to recommend us how much money we will need immediately and. And how to distribute that money. That's my only suggestion. Thank you.
Well, you know, on on that, that I think that was an example of how we're not there yet to decide that exactly um. But if two of the three people on this committee, I think maybe all we're all, we all mentioned. That um you know, there's there are immediate needs, how we go about and how much we go about distributing, I guess, is the decision portion of that. And since I put a question mark at the end of my sentence there, that's an example of how the facilitator can assist us. In getting, in breaking up the different segments of what we have to decide. One um uh uh suggest something as well. I know there was one. Type of software already um introduced to you by. Councilmember Murphy, something that I recently came across that um. You might want to compare to is uh something called Slido, S L I D O. Slido dot com, which is also a um. A um platform for polling. Um usable through Zoom. I'm not sure where we're going to be in September. Um whether we're still going to do hybrid or whether that, maybe that's a question here for the committee as well or staff, let it, let me know. But um in thinking about a two-part workshop, I'm still unsure whether we're going to do that via Zoom. Or whether we're going to do it live in chambers. But either way, um if 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 we're using Zoom, that Slido dot is a one option as well. It's just a polling option and. In these types of workshops, I think we don't necessarily go into depth. We want to take a quick pulse of who participates. And that's what um Slido can do for us.
Um, yeah, so that's as Director Gilery mentioned, we did do some research into various platforms that provide something like the Balancing Act. Um I frankly was under the impression that there were more uh products in that space, but it does turn out that the Balancing Act is really. The predominant one and offers a lot of functionality. Um so it's, there is an annual subscription. Um if we decided to use it, I think we could. Uh use it a few different times as part of this process. For instance, we might get some ideas. Uh from the community on additional appropriations this fiscal year, you know, prior to the first workshop. If the council uh identifies a refined narrowed list, we could ask for input on that prior to the second workshop. And then it's a tool that we could use prior to um the next uh year's budget process, because that will still be within the next year. So even if it's an annual subscription, I think we'll have many opportunities to use it. Um so Director Gilery can provide us with more information prior to the council meeting about um the cost for that. Uh my sense is that we're not going to be um. Ha- ready for a hybrid meeting um, you know, i- in the timeframe that we're tentatively discussing. I know that the staff report uh mentioned some potential dates. Um I uh. Our city clerk, Iyopo, identified that some of the dates that we talked about as tentative. Um are uh proximate to things like the League of California Cities Conference, and so that might be um. Um more uh public meetings and demands than the council's ready for in those weeks, so we might want to push those out a little bit. Irrespective, I think, um I don't think we're going to be at hybrid meetings, uh you know, say in towards the end of August or early September, probably. So if we do have a Saturday workshop, it'll probably be using uh a Zoom platform. Um so I think that's probably just the the reality of it. The um. The alternative, of course, would be a live in-person that wouldn't have a a Zoom component to it. So and I don't, I think that's probably less desirable.
Okay, so I know that we won't have a community um. Com- uh pardon me, a communications and engagement report back by the end of September. However, um in the interest of wanting to gather the input, um I. Think it was in the staff report where I saw multiple means of of obtaining input, not only the public's participation, but. It certainly with staff involved and um. There were a couple of other means and I forget, but I think that the, what I read from the report was. That it's all together, it's all the information that that is used to ultimately um guide. The direction can be used as a as a means to guide the direction the council can take and and help facilitate. Uh the council's decisions about that. Um so I wanted to. Emphasize that now, community input is is definitely valued and appreciated um. But knowing that, as in many cities, uh we might have only a select group of people who are available on the date. Regardless of what date this might turn out to be, even if it is on a Saturday. Um that that's, you know, one source of information and that we will also look into um. Um supplementing that with with um. The expertise of staff, the recommendations of consultants. And overall, to see the package and where there may be some themes or some consistent pieces of information that stand out. Um at least that's, that's what I'd like to to see this process um unfold as.
Um, yeah, we will not have a communications engagement plan, but my, it's my hope that the city council is gonna um. Approve an agreement with the firm that will prepare that at this coming Tuesday's council meeting. So we will have the vendors hopefully on board, and although it's not their main scope of work. Um I think Director Gilery would be happy to consult with the consultants that are selected just to get their thoughts, uh you know. In advance of a full-blown communication engagement plan. For, you know, ways that we might be able to engage the public immediately on this particular topic. So even if it's not within a big framework. They might have some ideas beyond the ones that she already um suggested, which are the Balancing Act and maybe some other form of survey. Or or Slido or some other tool.
Well, the missing piece is. And this is in principle, you have, you go out to where the people are. Which in Penole means you go out to the different neighborhoods and work with those who come out at a. Location that is convenient and available to them. And a facilitator has a list of questions to ask them for their input. And similarly, uh that happens across town, you know, all over, all over town. Um City of Penole, I know, has had such processes for the longer, the bigger general plan types of planning processes. And it's beautiful because you've got um. People who who might not otherwise have participated, but who come out and are part of that to inform. A document that's going to be longstanding uh to be used as a guide for future decision-making. And um it it, the flavors of the different. Parts of of Penole are reflected that way. So. I think that was attempted uh most recently or a form of that, but not as big. It was attempted most recently when there was a pollster um hired. Back when this council was asking about the possibility of have a, having a certain measure um on on the ballot. So that was an approach, but you know, the 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 point with this is to say that we don't rely entirely on surveys. Um because, again, that's that's for those who will respond to them. Um but to really, really have an inclusive approach. Um even the bigger firms that are equipped with marketing teams and research teams. Get their richest data, not on the basis of the number of data points that they collect, but the broader um kinds of responses that they obtain. And that only happens when we go out or a facilitating team, facilitation team goes out and um. And inquires directly. So it is that face-to-face interaction part of it. It is also a narrowing down of the kinds of questions that are asked. Of the people who um who whom the facilitator meets and then um the uh. The analysis of that um information supplementing the survey data or complementing the survey data. But in the absence of that, I mean, that that would be the the route to go if we have some time um into next year. Um in the absence of that, then um, yes, let's let's hear what the consultants have to say. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so was there consensus um that, uh so it sounds like there was. Consensus or affirmation of the decision that uh council already. Previously made tentatively, which was a two-workshop. Uh you know, each of them would have a component for ARPA and just general funds. Uh the first would be kind of brainstorming. There'd be some time in between for staff to do some analysis. Um and then the second one would be decisions. Um was there consensus on having outside facilitator? I I do think that would be um useful, as I've discussed with some folks um. You know, s- decision-making about city, the allocation of city resources is actually pretty complicated. Because there are so many different purposes for which city funds can be used. So. Reckon reconciling the the apples and oranges types of expenditures is actually um quite a challenge. And I think we got a little bit of a sense of that during this uh recent appropriations discussion. So. Um, does the majority of the subcommittee suggest that we have an outside facilitator for the workshops?
I'm agreeable.
Yes, yes, outside facilitator who not only has facilitation skills, but has an inkling about um. About econo- uh economic recovery, about long-term. Results.
Uh I'll mention that those might be two different folks, but we can see what's what's available.
Yeah.
Because there are firms, including some firms that we already work with, who um do that kind of works. For instance, HDL, so they could be a a subject matter expert that advise us, uh even if they're not the ones who are facilitating the workshop.
Yes, and you just said something, um Andrew, it could be the ones, I mean, they could be available for part of the workshop to give that aspect. To ground us into, you know, what's, what what are some possibilities? I think also um. It's informative to all of us to to review that there are also only so many means of generating revenue. And growing revenue for cities. I think there's a notion that it, that we can do things like a private sector and maybe maybe so in some instances, but not always because of the regulations and the. Constitutional requirements that cities have, which I have. Very little familiarity with, and I think that may be the case with all council members. Uh Mayor Protem Salimi?
Thank you. I would like to make a suggestion to um send a mail. To let the people in Penone that we're going to have this type of workshop, because I know that we have been uh. Emphasizing on sending information via Facebook and our website, but I still felt like. Not everybody is aware of it, and I would suggest to probably spend five thousand dollars to send a mailer. To everybody who lives in Penole with those specific dates, so that everybody is aware of it.
That would come out of this Rescue Plan Fund anyway, so. We we have the 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 funds to do that because it's directly uh you could directly related to the Rescue Act.
So that sounds like uh two subcommittee members who would recommend that. I think that's, um I agree, I mean, I think we're going to be looking into that much in much greater detail. But yes, I I think that's true, that the electronic means don't get to everybody. Um and communities use all sorts of mixtures of electronic and paper, so that seems, staff is happy to work on that. Um and then I believe that I heard earlier consensus on the use in some form or fashion of a. Uh digital engagement tool, survey, potentially real-time during the workshop, if we can make that technology work. Um about, you know, rapid voting in response about different items that are being discussed on. We, of course, want the workshop to be particularly, you know, one of the tasks of a professional facilitator would be to make it as engaging as possible. Um. It's a little hard when everybody's behind their computers, but I'm sure somebody has developed some clever techniques for that. So. Um do we have consensus to look for a a technology platform to for for voting and input?
Uh huh.
Yes, actually Zoom does provide that technology already.
Uh even though it's using Zoom features, the breakout rooms and the polling.
Yeah. Um we'll look at that, you know, um a- and in comparison to say Slido and the Balancing Act to see. What they do. If we can get it all done via Zoom, that would be great. Um. Uh if we want to do some stuff in advance, we'll have to think about whether, you know, some mixture of those technologies would make the most sense. Um and then I think um we will probably. Uh back off, soften those those specific recommended dates while staff talks internally. And then gets council's direction, because the council members will uh have more awareness than we do about all the various uh. Poten- you know, uh community events and other activities that they're going to be engaged in to look for some good um dates. We do have a number of uh upcoming community events. We've got um coastal cleanup coming up uh in about a month's time. We've got the car show the weekend after that, and so we do want to schedule with the League of California Cities, which I believe that. Uh most council members are going to. So we do have a couple other um. Community events that we don't want to uh create conflicts with. So we can uh talk about those specific dates as part of the council discussion and set those at that meeting too.
When we create this workshop plan, I think that it has to be framed. In the essence of making sure that everyone knows what we're talking about. This specific. Project and not everything in the community, so that we. We aren't aren't a towel hall meeting, so to speak. We are a functioning workshop on a specific uh use. So that we don't have a, when you send out of the fire, you don't have a lot of people coming down and say, I want to complain about the rut in my street. So I want to make sure that we frame that very clearly, so that the people understand the the direction of the uh. Process. That's all.
Agreed. Um. All right, well, Director Gilery, I think actually we have the um. I think we have a sense of what the consensus recommendation is from the subcommittee, so unless there are other um. Comments, uh Director Gilery can present that at the council meeting next week. Uh subcommittee members, please feel free to. Um jump in and provide context and discussion uh or explanation of the discussion that happened at the subcommittee meeting. That um gave rise to this recommended approach, and then we'll get council's direction and then be off and running planning the workshops.
Okay.
Fine with me.
Okay, Director Gilery, do we, anything else today?
No, well, I just wanted to add that in terms of timeline, we're uh basically on the same timeline as our peer agencies. And I thought that was um interesting, and then we've all been kind of networking on facilitators and consultants and. So I think we're uh still making good timing. I know we decided to do this after the budget process, but so did our peer agencies. So we're all in this together and and working with um and networking with other agencies as well.
Thank you. Then onward. Thank you, everyone. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Bye-bye.